I'm going to call to order the April 11th, 2023 open session meeting of the air planning board. The first order of business is to approve the agenda.
Move to approve the agenda as presented.
Do we have a second?
Seconded.
And discussion, anything that we need to change? The only thing I could think of that I, on my end, is that we, I think we can do the March 28th meeting minutes. We have a town planner update with some suggestions for things that we should continue to work on. And that's it. What do you guys have? Anything else on the agenda to modify before we vote?
Just so you know, I printed out the last version of the minutes this time and I put them in the back in case.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right. Hearing no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Chair votes aye, unanimous. So, first item is Nassauia, no, I'm sorry, we're going to do this real fast. Should we do what?
Well, maybe the motions to continue Nassauia.
Yeah, let's just do that real fast.
I'd like to move, move to continue the site plan, special permit, ARCA for overlay district and stormwater permit hearings for Nassauia Foods USA, one New England way, for a proposed major addition to the manufacturing plant building with related site improvements.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Chair votes aye, unanimous. Do we need anything other than that vote?
I moved to continue the site plan.
Move to continue it? Do we need to actually move to open it?
No, I guess not.
I guess, I think continue it.
Oh, yeah, yeah, continue it to the next open public meeting of the planning board.
Terrific.
Right, did we have a, did they ask for, they asked for a date?
Yeah, right. We have, well, we have a formal extension into May and we have an email request to continue it to the April 25th meeting.
Okay. So I moved to continue the site plan, special permit, ARCA for overlay district and stormwater permit hearings for Nassauia Foods USA, one New England way for a proposed major addition to the manufacturing plant building with related site improvements to the...
April 25th.
Regular planning board meeting. Regular planning board meeting on April 25th, 2023.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, unanimous. Thank you. I believe we can invite Cal to step up. And...
You open the public hearing?
Yes, please, would you?
Move to open the public hearing for the site plan, special permit, public hearing for Seal Harbor Company, Central Fire Station 14 Washington Street for conversion of the interior space into four paren, four closed paren residential apartments, one unit of commercial office space and a second story addition on the south side of the building.
Do I have a second?
Seconded.
Any discussion?
I think you said second, you should have said two story. Did you say second story?
And a two-story addition on the south side of the building.
Right.
Yeah. I thought I just read the words, I didn't listen to what I was doing.
Seconded again.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Yes.
Chair votes aye, it's officially open. I just want to turn to town plan for a moment. What can be accomplished today at this meeting?
Well, I, it's my understanding that there's a updated site plan, which Mr. Goldsmith could talk to us about.
Perfect.
Also, you know, it's up to the planning board whether they want to deal or act on the special permit request separately from the site plan. There's a potential to do that and in case the planning board is ready to do that, right after the agenda and the packet, I have a series of motions.
Terrific.
To effectuate that if the planning board wants to.
Okay, great. Cal, will you take us through the updates?
Good evening, sure. So you get just me tonight, Mark is in Maine and, as he didn't have any architectural plans to show you yet, he said he will for the next meeting. He didn't think he needed to be here, I kind of thought that was probably true. So we had talked about this building, which now extends right to the northern property line, much like this, so that building is going to be largely demolished. I think they may try and save the brick facade in the front. Mark had mentioned a butler building, that this was a butler building.
Yeah.
Or is a butler building.
What is a butler building, I'm sorry?
It's a prefabricated metal building.
Oh, of course, right.
So I think, so he's obviously going to remove that, he wants, last I knew anyways, he wanted to preserve the brick facade on this. He will put a door in here, an overhead door, matching these overhead doors, but it will be operable, it's because he's going to use this for storage space, which is why this changed from what it was to now a concrete patio, if you will, that he would be able to traverse these parking areas and get up into that garage for purposes of dropping off or picking up materials that are stored in here.
Let me ask a question.
Sure.
Where your cursor is right now, there's currently like an open grate of some kind in that, in the front of that section of the building. You know what I'm talking about, Ken, we visited there, we took a look. I guess my question is, what the heck is it and can you cover it and is it important?
Right where you showed it, Mike.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that and there is to do with the gas service. I think that, that is what this note says is going to be, actually it's right here. I guess I need to zoom a little bit more.
So there's actually, I guess my point I'm getting at is there's nothing there worth that you need to...
The plus sign, sorry.
I'm sorry, Mark.
Go left, it's the left of the number four.
Left of the plus sign.
Who's got it?
Right in the middle of the page.
There we go. Sorry, guys.
No worries. So my point is that there's nothing there that you, that you need to preserve?
No.
Okay, that's it.
No, and that, so that gas service is to be relocated inside the building, that's on, I think, on the demo plan.
Okay.
And this bike rack is outside the building. That is in the area where the gas service was.
Of that notch, right there, yep.
And then we're also moving the waste bins for the commercial and for the northern second floor unit and the commercial inside because we originally, we had it sitting in a shed outside here.
Yep.
That'll allow them to, to landscape this area adjacent to this slab and adjacent to the butter. The building is two foot smaller than what it was originally, showing that two foot space and the architectural she'll show you next week would address how this is, is going to be built. He mentioned something about a tower or a second floor to match on the other side to balance that off, but I haven't seen any plans, so I'm not sure exactly what he's got planned. Same number of parking spaces out front, obviously if somebody's parked in here, this wouldn't be accessible, but I think he would have control over that and especially during the day when most people aren't going to be here, he'd be able to get in there, but then again, that, that's his concern, that'll be up to him to figure out how he gets in and out of there. I don't think it's going to happen on a regular basis, but, but the rest of it is pretty much, was actually, is the same as it was last time.
Right.
Mr. Chair, may I ask?
Yes, of course.
I was, a quick comment last time, it's not to put you on the spot, but that hydrant that sits in the middle between the bay doors in the front of the building?
Yeah.
Have anybody looked at that? It's like...
I asked the last meeting.
Yeah, and I just, has anything, I mean, it's, the hydrant is bricked in.
Yeah.
It's ugly. The brick is damaged as well.
Yeah.
And that's up to Mike to figure that out.
I think he's going to restore this, whatever that means, to what, to what degree and to what...
I'm just amazed to see a hydrant that's actually bricked in somewhere.
I guess he was approached by people when he first got interested in the building and said, this is part of the building heritage and they really hope he'd be able to preserve that.
But it's not part of the funding that came from CPC. I'm like 90% certain on that and we can check the warrant article at what was voted on, but that has nothing, I just want to be very clear that that...
Yeah, that I'm just kind of curious, I mean, I finally, I've looked at that over the years, I finally, I looked at it, I'm like, yeah, they have a hydrant in front of a building and then they bricked it in so you can't get to it.
No, it's, the valves are exposed.
Well, yeah, but, yeah, never mind.
That'd be a question for Mark.
Yeah.
Yeah, because I really can't speak, so I'm not sure about the funding.
I was just curious. I don't want to belabor the point, but I was just...
Yeah, I'm here, it's, if, when you talk to Mark, it's a point of curiosity, we'd love to know just what he's thinking.
Okay.
Just for the record, we did say last meeting that he thought, he had heard that it was part of the CPC funding that went with the top part.
He said that.
And so I think, I think we should be concerned, at least in the town funding goes, exactly what was approved and how that affects the building, right? Am I missing?
I don't recall that.
For the chair, I don't recall any statement like that and I didn't see it in the minutes.
I thought that, that's perfect. I checked the minutes to make sure it wasn't being cited, so I agree it wasn't in the minutes, but it was stated as the original person's comment.
It's curiosity on the property, I'm kind of curious how it got there, but we'll figure that out eventually, yeah.
I think it, oh, never mind. I checked in already, it doesn't matter.
So in any case, with the relocation of the waste bins inside frees up space for some landscaping on this northern boundary, which I think is a good thing. We've shown this as concrete, it wouldn't surprise me at all if you wanted to continue the stamped concrete into this area as well. We just didn't have a chance to get face to face with him, our engineer didn't, didn't show it as stamped, but I kind of would guess that that's what he would end up doing with this, but we'll see. But other than that...
Question about the ground floor unit, that's on the southern side.
Yep, yep.
And that space right there.
Yeah, so there's one unit accessible like this, the other unit come in here, there's mailboxes here, as I recall, and, and then this goes up to the second floor unit on this side. Maybe two, I have to look at the, I don't remember, I think it's three on this side and one on the other side. The one on the other side is the upper floor and then this is one down and two up, I think, on this side.
We're, we're checking out the site plan anyway, the architectural is going to have to fit in.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah.
But just remind me what it is, it's, it's, it's four resident, it's five residential units, four up above?
Four residential.
It is four residential.
They eliminated, he eliminated, the northern building downstairs is gone.
So is it three up, one down, or all four up and then the commercial space down?
I think it's now three.
Three up, one down.
Three up, one down.
In the commercial space.
And the commercial space, so it's three up, one down, commercial, and a commercial space.
Yeah.
Okay, got it.
One in the new addition, two in the old place and one ground floor unit in the new addition.
And the unit we lost was the affordable unit, yes?
This, this unit, yes. And this, well, it wasn't that specific unit, it's just that now there's four, so there's not a requirement for an affordable unit.
Right. So, still, yeah. Thank you.
That's all I've got to show you.
All right.
Yeah, he dropped off two plans, I don't know if a planning board member wants to take one back, but one should stay with me in the file.
Just need to know the date on it, if we're going to, if we are going to act on...
We want to reference that date.
April 11th is when they revise this.
Okay.
It should be a revision date on the...
Yeah, I do.
Yep.
Mark's put some possible motions in front of us and there's a space for the date.
It's a good thing.
Whether or not we'll act on them, I don't know, but we'll put them in there now.
Okay.
Oh.
We should pull one up and just double check.
Sure.
I did look at the demo plan, the demolition plan does reflect removal of this portion of the building according to the, just references back to the architectural plans.
So we ready to talk about the special permits?
I have a question.
Sure.
The addition of that pavement, does that change your open space calculations in the shown hand?
It changed things a little bit, but we're also gaining two feet all along this side, so I think it's probably pretty close. It's on the, on the cover page, should be the numbers. I think it's a 10% reduction, as I recall, a 10% reduction in impervious surface. Those are our coverage computations. So the existing building is 6323 and the new building is 5774.
So it's an overall reduction in almost 1,000 feet?
Yes.
Or 10% impervious surface coverage on the, on the property?
Yep. So that along with the, along with capturing some of the roof runoff and being able to recharge it into the ground and additional landscaping should mitigate a good bit of the runoff.
Have the... Any, did we have DPW, has DPW looked at the stormwater in this building yet?
There, yeah, they have, well, with the, the original.
Yeah, they made a comment, basically it said, yes, you're reducing the stormwater.
Slightly revised, but I will share this new one with them, of course. I should see them now.
I'm sure it's, it's, it's touching the new big bases.
Yeah, they just basically came back and said, yeah, we agree, you're reducing stormwater.
Make sure I don't, I take that back with me.
No, it's just going to sit there for now.
Sure.
Yeah, you can have it.
Just a moment.
What's the date on the plans, Mark?
April 11th, 2023.
Thank you.
Revision date, April 11th.
Yep. Are we ready for the special permit conversation?
We want to do this.
You want to do this?
The site plan?
Well, wouldn't, I would recommend that we, you know, look at this a little more closely, I don't think we're ready to act on the site plan this evening.
You don't?
No. Because we're just getting it for the first time right now.
I'm just sorry, it's only the changes he talked about.
Okay, well, but still, I would like to afford DPW one last chance to look at it.
Okay.
And whenever we get our revised plan, that's usually how we do it, but...
Yeah, I feel comfortable with discussing the special permits in case people wonder, why would I want to talk, why do I think we should be talking about the special permits without the site plan, it's because we had extensive discussions in the previous two meetings about the special permit, so I feel that that's, well, we've had plenty of opportunity to talk, which does preclude us from having continued conversation, but I feel that we're a long way there. I feel with the site plan, just, I know that revisions are pretty modest, but, yeah, I'd like to have a look, you know, I think that's reasonable. There was a, a tangle of, what's the right word, concern about appropriate authority with the special permits. Are we past that now?
Yes.
Okay, good. Are we, agree?
Right, right. Since, since a unit was dropped, the building commissioner is okay with the special permit procedure.
All right.
Particularly converting, converting the use?
Yep.
That changed the...
So there's two special permit, the conversion of, of the use to multifamily and then the other one, remember there was a conversation about dwelling unit, does that refer to the singular, does it also encompass the plural and the Alexander to the Gordian knot solution is to say, we're just going to seek the special permit for the single dwelling unit?
The, in other words, the proponent has said they will not challenge that decision, they'll accept it.
Correct, right.
And I think we're all probably upset that we don't get more units of living space there for different reasons, but it seems to be the fastest way of getting that building back in shape.
Right. That does appear to be the situation, yes.
We're all going to get half a cake, but, we're all going to get half. No one gets the whole.
So, what is there to discuss that we haven't discussed? Any, any one on this? We have some possible motions here, they look very well written, thank you, Mark, for that. They're consistent with our previous discussions where we are, we've had two weeks to reflect. Any further commentary, any, anything? Can I, can we discuss then the possible motion for the findings first?
Would you like me to read the first finding, the first possible motion?
Please do.
Okay. The moting, the mo, the possible motion for findings on the special permit approval criteria, the first motion reads, I move that the air planning board finds that both special permit applications for the historic central fire station at 14 Washington Street for section 5.2.1.5 and section 5.2.1.7 in the table of use regulations meet the criteria for granting of a special permit found in section 3.4. B of the air zoning bylaw, including one, social, economic or community needs which are served by the proposal, two, traffic flow and safety, including parking and loading, three, adequacy of utilities and other public services, four, neighborhood character and social structures, five, impacts on the, on the natural environment, and six, potential fiscal impacts, including impacts on town services, tax base and employment.
Yeah, my, my mind, it meets all six. I mean, we, I could elaborate or we could, but...
Why don't you elaborate?
Yeah, so social, economic, community needs, I think it's well understood in this town and we would love to preserve this forest, the station has historic and aesthetic value, plus it's creating housing. Traffic flow and safety, including parking, loading, this is a very low traffic flow, low impact. I think we agreed to, to, I think we even waived the traffic because we don't anticipate anything significant there.
Yeah.
Adequacy of utilities and other public services, I don't think there's ever been any issue of doubt on that. Neighborhood character and social structures, we're retaining an historic building in that area, so that's perfectly consistent. Impacts on the natural environment and the footprint will actually be, impermeable surface is actually going to be reduced, which would have been the most significant impact, yes sir?
And, and they're adding stormwater retention underneath the prop...
And they're adding something. And then the petition, oh, I'm sorry.
The stormwater retention on the property.
And the, the potential fiscal impacts that I see would all be positive and favorable. We would be getting...
Do we know if this is going to be an apartment or a condo?
I think it's going to be apartments.
Thank you.
I think he's going to rent them.
Thank you.
All right. Ready to make a motion?
I just want to clarify one thing in the motion. Mark, this is for you to look over, so the table of, you know, uses has this five point, you know, two, 1.5 section, which talks about us converting a non-residential or mixed use to a multifamily.
Mm-hmm.
That's not what we're doing. We're converting a non-residential to a mixed use.
Mm-hmm.
So I was going to caution everybody that we motion it that way rather than the way the table reads and make the motion line up with what we're actually giving them.
Does that create legal problems down the road though with the, because it's not explicitly phrased that way in the table?
Well, I think we understood that the definition needs, needs some work, but I think we also agreed, the applicant and the planning board, that, you know, for the sake of working through this, that the definition, as poor as it is, is sufficient to, you know, work with.
I would ask Mr. Tiskin if the language, if we added the language.
If you want to add clarifying links.
Yeah, I would say, I'm going to just toss this out because I don't have the tables in front of me.
Probably, I'm thinking the same thing, probably.
Yeah, the air planning board finds that both special permit applications for the historic central fire station...
No, I'm not, I'm not, I don't have a problem with the findings.
Okay.
Findings were good.
Okay.
I stepped ahead to the motion.
Oh, I haven't gotten there, I haven't gotten there yet, please, why don't you go ahead on that?
We want to, okay, so you want a motion to approve the findings.
Yeah, let's do the findings first and then we'll go to the chair. Yes, sir, Cal.
I just want to make a comment. The reason we went to the special perm is because the zoning enforcement officer opined that because the bylaws, in his words, were not clear, that he is going to require a use to make the conversion to the mixed use, which is not in the bylaws, but that's, that's why he said it, so you may want to make reference to his opinion, zoning enforcement officer opinion, where he specifically said, so therefore this project requires a special permit.
No, we know, we know that. We agree it needs a special permit.
I just, you may want to make reference to his opinion, that's all.
Another, I don't know if this was Jeff was going to suggest, but it could be, when we get to number, the possible motion, the first one?
Yeah.
We may say conversion of a non-residential or mixed use building to a multifamily mixed use building and just make it cover both of them.
Mm-hmm.
If that's acceptable to everyone.
And that is a recommendation of building inspector?
Yes.
That's our understanding of it.
As recommended by our...
As long as you promise not to do it every time, come before, fix the bylaw.
That's on my, that's on my list of recommendations.
Thinking bylaws, Cal.
That's on my list of recommendations.
I like it by what's written.
We got, all right. So let's take it one by one, so...
Seven years ago.
The very first one about the findings, not for approval, do I have a motion for the findings as read into the record by Jeff Tillitson?
So I'll move.
I'll second it.
I'll second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Chair votes aye, the findings are unanimous. So now we can move to the, just going to do one at a time, for the special permit number one, which is regarding the conversion of a non-residential or mixed use building to a multifamily mixed use dwelling. Jeff, would you like to read that into the record?
Um, yeah, I'm just thinking about where around that point, if you don't mind, Mr. Chair.
Sure, of course.
A non-residential mixed use building to a mixed use and multifamily dwelling.
Yep.
I think that covers it better, so I make a motion to approve the special permit application pursuant to sections 5.2.1.5 in the table of use regulations for conversion of a non-residential or mixed use building to a mixed use multifamily dwelling for the central fire station property at 14 Washington Street. Four dwelling units are being proposed within the historic building and are proposed additions reflected on the revised site plan dated April 11th, 2023. And I said it quickly, but I would recommend it to be mixed use comma multifamily dwelling. I would, it's just a comma there.
Yep.
I think that covers...
That's redundant, but it covers, yeah.
Yes.
I'm, redundancy, redundancy. Yes.
Seconded.
Seconded. Further discussion?
Yes.
Yes, please, so start with Ken and then I'll acknowledge Nathan, Ken.
Okay, so I like the fact that you added, we covered the fact that it's going from non-residential or mixed use to a multifamily dwelling, multifamily mixed use?
And, it's an and, it's an and, yes. It's not an either or, it's an and.
Multifamily and mixed use.
It's a comma.
Yes. Mixed use and multifamily is how, it's how I...
Building.
Yeah.
Multifamily and mixed use building. We're going to use that term.
Building instead of dwelling.
Actually, I said mixed use comma multifamily dwelling. I'm happy to say mixed use and multifamily, yeah. I'm not going to get hung up on that.
For the central fire station property at 14 Washington.
If I said it was a mixed use multifamily dwelling, I don't think that's clear without some sort of separation.
Do you think we need the second half of the, the second sentence at all?
Which is, begins where?
Four dwelling units are being proposed, both within the historic building and a proposed addition as reflected on the site plan.
I would consider it friendly to remove that.
I, I actually would prefer if we at least keep the language as reflected in the revised site plan dated April 11th, 2023.
I would agree with that.
That part we should keep.
The only thought I had on the four dwelling units is we should, if you were going to keep the whole sentence, we'd have to add in the four dwelling units plus a commercial space to qualify it.
Oh, yes, well, that's, that might be good. I, I like the clarity or the specificity of citing how things have changed a little bit.
So I'd, I'd clarify the second sentence just in a friendly way to say, four dwelling units and a first floor commercial space are being proposed, both within, so on, so.
Oh, is he as proposed within the historic, yeah, okay.
So the, adding the words in commercial, first floor space, or first floor commercial space, whatever you want to say it.
Yep.
And I would just, I think English would say as proposed as opposed to are being.
As proposed, both within the historic building.
Yeah, as proposed.
I consider that friendly.
Okay.
Now just don't change your mind.
So do we want to clarify it again, Mr. Chair, read it one more time?
Well, for, if, 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 if we're going to have two separate sentences, then the are being proposed is grammatically correct. Let's, we, we can retain that.
Okay.
So let's do that. So, um, do you mind if I read it?
Go for it.
So the amended, friendly amended motion would be, uh, to approve the special permit applicant pursuant to section 5 dot 2 dot 1 dot 5 in the table of use regulations for conversion of a non-residential or mixed use building to a mixed use and multifamily building for the central fire station property at 14 Washington Street period. Four dwelling units and a first floor commercial space are being proposed, both within the historic, are bo, are, are, are being proposed within the historic building and in a proposed, proposed addition as reflected in the revised site plan dated April 11th, 2023.
You took out the word both, right? We deleted that, we don't, we don't need that word.
I don't think we need that. As, as reading it, it made no...
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, it's unanimous. Let's talk about the next mo, uh, I'm going to read it just so we know. It's special permit number two, section 5 dot 2 dot 1 dot 7. In the table of use regulations, I make a motion to approve the special permit application pursuant to section 5217 in the table of use regulations for dwelling unit at grade in a commercial building for the central fire station at 14 Washington Street as reflected in the revised site plan dated April 11th, 2023.
I think that language is fine.
What are we approving?
A, the dwelling unit at grade.
Permitting a dwelling unit at grade.
Correct, because every, in the table of use, it requires our...
All has to be at the second, it has to be above grade, above the first floor?
No, it has to be on, at grade.
It's allowed if you're on the second floor, special permit if you're on the first floor.
Right, so the table of use, it says it's, it's acceptable with a special permit from this board.
Yeah. Yeah, I just, the, uh, sentence is a little confusing that what we are permitting is a dwelling unit at grade.
Yes.
Yes. The per, the special permit permits.
Right.
A dwelling unit at grade because we are the permit granting authority for a special permit given the table of use.
Yeah, right, right. It's just that this, this motion says, I approve an application in the regulations, here's what the regulations are about, and then what am I approving?
Doesn't, I don't, I got, mine doesn't have the word regulation or, uh, application in it at all. Mine says, I make a motion to approve the special, or permit application, you're right. So I think he's correct, we should just take out the word application. They don't, it's not an application we're approving. He's correct.
Yeah, but it...
I, go ahead, Nathan.
But either way it works.
What I'm trying to say is that we're not approving, it just needs to say that we are approving a dwelling unit at grade, not the table of use regulations for, that's just clarifying the table of use regulations. What we're approving is a dwelling unit at grade.
The motion proves...
Yeah, special permit pursuant to the section in the table of...
Sure, you can say that.
I think, I'll tell you what, I wouldn't make any changes to it, leave it exactly the way it is, the mark, the way Mark wrote it. I think it's correct the way it is. That's my own opinion.
What are we approving?
We're approving just exactly what it says.
The dwelling unit at grade.
We've got an application for a special permit. We received it already, we've had it for a month or two, whatever it is.
Right.
We looked at it, we analyzed it, we determined that it was compliant with section 5.2.1.7, which requires the planning board give a special permit.
I know, yeah, I know, I, I understand what we're permitting.
Yeah.
It's, it's the language of this motion that says, I'm approving a special permit.
For the dwelling unit.
For a dwelling unit at grade.
Yes.
Right, well, that, that quote, the, the, the way he's got it with the italics, that's the lang, first sentence of the, the co, the table. So he's using the ta, the language right out of the table with the italics.
Okay.
I think that identifies the unit that you're asking about.
Oh, yeah, I know what we're doing.
Okay.
Do I have a motion?
I thought we had a motion.
No, I just read it into the record, I would need someone to say, I, as read into the record by Chair Jonathan Krantz.
So moved.
I'll second.
Any further discussion?
I want to be clear that Nathan is okay with what we're doing, that's all.
I think, I understand the intent, I, I really don't like the sentence, but I understand the intent, so I'm, I'm with the intent.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, it's unanimous. Thank you.
Okay, hopefully on the 25th, uh, address of...
That's the plan.
Continue the site...
Yes, I need a motion to continue.
We continue the site plan and special permit public hearing for Seal Harbor Company Central Fire Station 14 Washington Street for conversion of the interior space into four residential apartments, one unit of commercial space, office space, and a two-story addition on the south side of the building to our next scheduled air planning board meeting.
My question is, do you want to close the special permit hearing tonight since you just approved it and continue the site plan approval process only?
Exactly.
Well, sick, would you...
I don't have a motion, so thanks for the reminder.
Yeah, let's, let's do that, include it, can we do that in one motion that we, two separate motions? So first, looking for a motion to close the special permit.
I moved to close the special permit public hearing for Seal Harbor Company Central Fire Station 14 Washington Street for conversion of the interior space into four residential apartments, one unit of commercial office space and a two-story addition on the south side of the building.
Seconded.
All in favor?
All yes, discussion.
I know, discussion?
There's no chance that GPR or someone else has another requirement for a special permit. You've thought about this and the waiver's involved. So if there's another waiver that comes up, it'll be under site plan work. That was my question, because you had, you had made a statement at the last meeting, you know, the application includes whatever potential.
We have not identified any further permitting.
Okay.
But it's during the course of discussion, sometimes it'll come up and somebody will say, hey, wait a minute, that's not how I read the bylaw, I think you need a special permit for this, or you need a waiver for that. We have not identified anything. Although if we did identify a new waiver, that's still...
Waiver's no problem, right, yeah.
But we have not identified a special permit. I think we've gotten one more than we needed as it is, is in my opinion, but I'm perfectly happy with doing that.
I just want to make sure that we're all clear that that, there's no chance, because I'd like to have a clean break from it.
Yeah, no, I...
Fine, good enough.
So I have a motion, we have a second?
We've had discussion.
We've had discussion, all in favor?
Yeah.
Chair votes aye.
I'd like to move to continue the site plan, public hearing for Seal Harbor Company Central Fire Station 14 Washington Street for conversion to the interior space into four residential apartments, one unit of commercial office space and a two-story addition on the south side of the building to our next scheduled air planning board meeting.
So moved, second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Very good. Have a good one, my, uh...
Oh, right, we have to get his, uh, flash out. Yeah.
Go ahead, we all do that.
Go ahead, watch out, don't zap yourself, though.
There you go.
Should be alright, yep. Okay.
Okay.
It's occurred to me tonight as I was getting ready for this, the only other planning board I know of that starts this early is the Worcester Planning Board, they start at 5:30. But I got to tell you, most other boards start at 7:00 or 7:30. I love the fact that you guys start at 6:15. That is just the best, thank you.
Take care.
So we have a, a pretty thorough town planner update today, I believe, right? Yeah, great, so what's on your mind? Let's, let's talk about this.
Okay, well, I just wanted to go through a few paper handouts of things. Uh, first of all is, you know, I've been keeping a list of, of potential projects, which, you know, had I, was, been staying on, you know, I would have started on as well. But I think these are good projects for the planning board and/or a future planner.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, first would be to revisit the planning board administrative rules and regulations. Because when I started in, in late 2017, I don't think there were any. Or if they were, they were, they were very scant, they didn't have much detail. And, you know, I think the existing set of rules and regs are, are quite good. But it might be good to just, you know, look at them again and, and see if, you know, if there's anything that would want to be changed. I, I know one thing that has come up that has a slight difference is, you know, like the number of copies. You know, we might talk about a site plan needs so many copies and the rules and regs, and then if you go to the site plan regs, it might be one or two different. I think we, we try to be consistent, but those are little, you know, procedural things to look at.
Mm-hmm.
You know, I don't think that's a huge project, but I think, you know, just to periodically, just like you go back and look at the zoning bylaw and the master plan, periodically looking at our regulations, I think is, is a good thing.
I agree.
And historically, there were no regulations prior, well, there were regulations prior to 2017, but then the town unfunded the planning department for a year, the regulations went by the way. And it became very clear that the bylaw needed to be updated. And along that, we also decided that certain things didn't, the feeling was not everything needs to be in a bylaw, you know, set of regulations also. And that was something that Heather worked on, Heather Hampson worked on this in the beginning. Like, like zoning regulations, they have to be a breathing, living document.
Yep, and number two is the site plan regulations themselves, which again, I think are, are, you know, pretty good. But again, I think even more so for the site plan regulations, it was really nothing. I think it was like one page when I got here. So they were, you know, very inadequate. So I think it might be good to, you know, just look at those again and make sure that, you know, maybe consider site plans that have been approved in the last few years. Is there anything that you, that we missed or has caused a, a problem with interpretation maybe, where we have to be more specific in the language, that sort of thing.
Mm-hmm.
You know, one thing...
Yeah, I was going to say, any specific in mind you think is a glaring, uh, area that needs to be improved?
No, no, I think, one thing I was actually surprised at by, you know, Judy Barrett, the consultant's work on, in the, in the bylaw, section nine in the bylaw, once you get past the parking section, nine and one, the other sections go into landscaping and lighting and all this, very, very specific standards. Some of those in the, in, in the bylaw, uh, because they were so specific, I cross-referenced many of those in the regulations. It may be possible that if the planning board wants it so that, you know, those can be more easily waivable, to remove them from the bylaw and just make sure that they're in the regulations. So just to physically pull stuff from the bylaw section that has to do with the...
I got it right here. It's the, it's the so-called open space landscaping standards.
Right, all those standards.
Commercial development standards, environmental performance, that's good.
Yeah, section, the section nine standards are really, really detailed. I mean, I think they're excellent, but she stuck them in the bylaw itself for, for whatever reason. And it might be good to pull some of those from the bylaw and just have them in the regulations and not in the bylaw, because if they're in the regulations, they're more easily dealt with. You don't, you know, need a, you know, unless it says that you can waive it.
I, 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 I get, I hear your point, I'm thinking, just because of what you just said, that it would be, is your, are we sure we want to do that? You know what I'm saying?
We'll take some thought.
Yeah, that, we need to give it thought.
So we have done, the current rendition of the planning board has focused on the value of the land, landscaping, not cutting everything off the land, identifying and saving, working better with the conservation commission.
Definitely.
So I think, given that, we might find that we could be more open to moving from bylaw into regulation. And prior to this, prior to them being put in the bylaw, they were huge discussion points. And it became almost unenforceable to get the type of landscaping that the town, at the time, the town wanted. So it was at the recommendation to put it in the bylaw. Maybe the pendulum swung too far, but I don't think, I don't think, I mean, we, we, I know Panther Place is an OSRD, but having landscaping being in that and stuff like that is a very powerful way to make it a much better neighborhood. And we're looking at pocket parks and stuff like that. I think the, the general public has grown up a lot. But as I ride around in towns around here where condominiums are going up, they have no landscaping. They have taken land that was enjoyed one way and then turned into land that really isn't enjoyable anymore. So I, for one, would argue strongly, yes, having them in the bylaw raises the bar for making changes. But I'm not, I'm not, I don't think I'm there yet. And I do appreciate what you're saying, Mark.
And I do, yeah, see, I'm, I'm, I guess I feel very similarly to Jeff. I appreciate your saying, I think it does merit review. I would be extremely cautious about making that transition because if I put, if I leaving that in the bylaw, I think it's stronger and more enforceable. So these are things that are worth discussing, though, I think they're worth, worth having the conversation.
I also look at it from the standpoint of economics, okay? We want high-quality projects, we've got high-quality projects now.
Right.
You know, Mr. Aho, good guy came in, built the thing, put the money up, did it. Been no trouble. So, um, you know, and we're still, and Ping, and Pingree Hill's still not done. So that's been 15 years, they're still not done. So we, if we let the person, the proponent coming into town know what they need to do, we end up, I think, with high-quality, high-quality proponents who are in it for the game. And we haven't had that, we haven't, we've been fortunate in the last five or seven years, nobody's backed away.
Okay, good.
So I think it...
Yes, Ken?
I think the important thing here is that Mark has given us the guideline, which I think is very helpful.
Me too.
And then, you know, we'll look at it, see what happens. But the idea of getting it in front of us is very important, I think.
I agree.
We have a place to start. And then, thank you, Mark.
Yep, I agree, thank you.
Uh, number three, and, you know, if the board wants to, I mean, this involves giving up a little bit of, you know, at the table at the meeting authority to, to someone else, whether it be the building commissioner or the future planner or somebody, uh, you know, sometimes do this where they have minor site plan review. And, you know, it's got to meet certain criteria, like it's not increasing parking or it's not a, you know, it's a very minor change of use with very, you know, insignificant changes to the site. You know, you can develop a list of criteria for a minor site plan. The one that we just had, one bishop of it is a case in point.
Absolutely, that's a perfect example.
You know, they don't have to do a fully engineered, you know, application. So, you know, do we want to carve out a provision for minor site plans that can be handled more administratively, perhaps by the building commissioner? And so that they don't have to come before the planning board, as long as he communicates to the planning board that he received the application, he, you know, he went down their checklist, it's minor, he can just grant it and, uh, and let the planning board know afterwards or something like that. And in, in the handout that I sent to everybody, I sent, you know, the draft that I had, there's examples of other towns, what they've done in there. So you can go to their site plan regulations and see how it actually is written. And, uh, you know, and I started developing an outline without finishing it.
I, I, I look for...
It's something to think about.
I, I, I appreciate this and I think this is a wise thing that, that we should be looking at. I have two concerns. One is, the first is, we have to be super careful about how we define what minor means in this context, what a minor. That has to be absolutely, you know, very cautiously defined. The second thing is, I'm not gen, too enthusiastic about surrendering planning board authority, that even if we were to decide that there were things for minor, I, I wouldn't want to surrender authority. I'd rather just have a very simplified and streamlined process for the applicant instead.
If, if I may, um, conservation is doing this now. Conservation agent has been, and this is something that they worked on for years. There's a fair amount of stuff that has, that happens in town. People move into town and there are trees on their property that may be considered by an insurance company to be a danger to the property or maybe in, it may be in poor shape. So you used to have to go to the commission and go through and get an RDA. And that's a multi-step process. The commission has given, has invested in their agent now, the ability to go and make a determination. And then bring it to the commission, so the commission can say, we agree. And they move that forward. So it's, it's, it's a commission, it's something the commission actually is responsible for. But they don't have to do a sidewalk, they don't have to do multiple meetings with the, with the homeowners. And it, it, it's, that's an important piece of what they do, but the whole streamlining of it also allows them to really dig in on all the stuff. And I think there may or may not be stuff that we could look at that way. And, and yes, I agree, we'd have to decide what's minor and what isn't minor. I don't think we can, I don't think we can determine that upfront. I think that is interplay between the chairman, the vice chair, and the planner. And we know stuff's coming down the pike, so we might have a conversation about it. And then invest in the planner, the opportunity, the, the, the ability to, you know, dig in on this and dig in on that, bring us back a report. That might be, again, bishop work that way. But, you know, so I, I'm open to that, quite honestly. I also think it gives the person who sits in the seat as a town planner, um, much more investment in their job. Everyone likes to have a little decision of authority. Not, I'm not, I know you're in the room, Mark, don't worry about that.
No, I'm not, I'm not taking anything personally.
Yes, but you notice you said town planner, not the, uh, building enforcement, building enforcement officer.
And I, I was very, very careful about that.
Yes, okay.
And you need to work with the building enforcement.
We do.
That, that is, they, they track right along each other.
Okay.
You, you don't need to get along, but you got to get, you got to get the work done.
Couldn't we potentially, I know you've had this in your mind, Mark, for a long time, because it came up when we did the original site plan regulations.
Right, yes, yes.
We talked about it then, and we, I thought we left what's a so-called placeholder, I think that's the term.
Right, yeah, there's a placeholder in there.
Maybe in the placeholder, all we have to do is put language similar to this, that, you know, at the discretion of the planning board, a vote could be taken to establish that this project is a minor project based on certain standards.
I like that a lot.
Just a one paragraph thing. So when a person came in, they could take the option of asking the planning board to determine if it was a minor project. And then we just vote on it, we'd say, you know, then we clear it up. We were voting that this is a minor project and therefore, you know...
It's another step in the way...
Streamline it a little bit, you know?
It's another step towards prescriptive planning, zoning, which is what the form-based code is.
But he's had that idea for a long time, we have to put it in somewhere.
And in the email that I sent out with the draft that I was working on, I, I think the one thing that I did complete mostly was, was the criteria of a minor, or the definition, I should say, what constitutes a minor. And you may agree or disagree with that.
Oh, okay, so you have some language.
Yeah, yeah, you know, you know, like fewer than so many parking spaces, uh, you know. Look and see what you think about it.
Excellent.
Uh, number four, and this is... Uh, number four, and this is something that, you know, goes back before this bylaw, uh, you know, the new bylaw. The general business district was intended, of course, for business. It includes, you know, property, um, along 2A, but also, uh, prop, some property along Park, Park Street and, uh, Fitchburg Road. And it really wasn't intended for residential, but we're getting more people interested in residential in the general business district. And the question has come up just a few times, but it's, I think it's going to come up increasingly, is, okay, you got a, you know, several acre piece of land in the GB zone, how many dwelling units can you get on it? The bylaw is kind of wishy-washy about that, you know? We, we have a 15,000 square feet minimum lot size, but that's not the size of a building lot for a unit per se. So it's kind of like, just like with the Form Based Code, it's sort of like, what can you get in there that meets the so many square feet per dwelling unit and all the other dimensional things? If you can, if you can meet all those dimensional things, you can get as many units as you want, apparently, it seems, in the general business district. So whether, you know, you like that, or, you know, want to see a change, you know, uh, you know, that's.
Okay.
Yeah, for instance, the, the 40B is in the general business. Well, lots of it's in the 40.
That's a three-zone.
It's a three-zone thing, but a lot, most of the area is in the GB, so you can see that you can get a lot of units in there if you want to.
Also, we're going to find out that a number of the locations that Mark has just mentioned are in the MBTA zoning district.
Some of them are, yeah.
Some.
No, some are.
Some of the GB is north of it.
And I truly believe the MBTA zoning, if I can call it that right now, is going to expand over time.
I think the thing that's tricky with this is that we've, we're pretty much determined that we did not want to change the zoning districts themselves, the, the location of the districts.
Yes.
But what has changed is the requirement for housing. So it may be more beneficial for a developer to look at any district that they can build housing, okay? Versus years ago when people said, you know, there should be shopping along this area, or there should be a.
Right, yes.
Rental store, or whatever it is, that should land in this general business. So I think the use is chan, potentially changing right before our eyes.
I think so, too.
Rather than us being able to figure out what is the best application.
You, you can't find a used car dealership anywhere on Park Street anymore.
Yeah.
And that was zoned for used car. That's, that was the historic zoning of that street.
Right.
And I think that what we've learned from CPTC conferences is that the general trend is moving toward allowing housing in more and more zoning districts, that, that seems to be the, the momentum.
Right, yeah. Yeah, it, it is, it is allowed, but it's not, you know, it's not addressing the depth that other districts are, so I thought.
Because of the, you're referring to the general residence district versus the general business district.
Well, general residence is well-defined.
Right, it's well-defined, but that's what you're comparing it to.
Right, yeah. GR is well-defined, 10,000 square feet for the first unit.
Plus three, yeah, I got it.
3,000 for each additional. So you know exactly, and it's easy to do the math, but doing the math on GB is not as easy.
Right.
And, uh, so, so, yeah, and, and it's, it's, it's coming up more frequently, you know, the, the hotel over there, the motel could potentially go residential, and that's in the GB, so, you know.
The land this side of the motel just came on the market.
Yes, it did. That's exactly the one he's talking about.
Yeah.
Yep.
I can't think of a more perfect place to put residences.
Well, you're going to find out. Something might happen there when I sell it.
So the next one, number five on the back of the, that page is Fun Fun, the parking regs. So I, I've been slowly working on, you know, trying to just reorganize. So this draft here that you have, and I sent it to everybody as a work file, you know, that reflects this work, you know? I'm, I'm sure there's a little more work that would need to be done, but what you see here is, it doesn't change any of the dimensional standards or, or requirements, it just tries to better organize them. Because if you remember before, special permits were scattered throughout, and, uh, you know, things that you could waive were scattered throughout, and it was really hard to know, you know, how to, you know, what, what, what was applicable for a certain case. I remember the first time that property, 14 Washington, came before us, it took me days just to go through the parking section to figure out all the little things that they had to check off, you know?
So I, I want to, just for clarity's sake, this conversation is about just reorganizing the current.
The current.
Current regulations for clarity. It's not about changing, for example, our parking requirements themselves, like per unit, X number. That's a, a different conversation, a conversation I think we've already begun to have, or we need to continue to have, but that's, if I understand you correctly, Mark, that's a separate conversation, right?
Right, yeah, whether you want to change the standards, this is, you know, just.
This is just a simplification.
Reorganizing it, so it's, you know, the, the special permit stuff is together, and, you know, things that should be together are together.
Okay.
Whereas it was kind of scattershot the first time.
So your recommendation here is that we would replace the language in these sections in totally with the new red, remove the, for instance, the first page, section C, you just take out whatever's there and put in what you've got in red.
Right, yeah, you know, you could just take section 9.1 and replace it with this new 9.1. Uh, well, it goes beyond 9.1, it goes all the way to 9, six or whatever, but, you know.
What about, I noticed something very interesting here, because we just used this whole feature, but you've got, you've got the 9.110.
modifications and waivers, yes.
Bashed off, and we just use that extensively.
That, that is somewhere else.
That's what I was thinking, you must have put it somewhere else, right?
Yeah, that's on page six at the top.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, so we go, it, it just goes to a different location.
Right.
A more appropriate, easy-to-find location, maybe, something like that.
Right, yeah. But again, you know, even some of this reorganization, you may or may not agree with at all, but, you know, it's something to start with, instead of looking at, you know, a blank, not a blank page, but a page with the old text, might be, this at least gives you a starting point, perhaps. Okay, number six, consider adopting the Mullen Rule, which has come up in the case of Nassauia. Would allow a member, a planning board member, or a ZBA member, to miss a meeting and still vote on a special permit application after coming up to date on previous proceedings.
So I'm curious, is this, is this the Mullen or the Mulligan Rule?
No, it's the Mullen.
I, no, that was just, that was for Mr. Diskin.
Right, for golf players. So, and I, I know that's on Robert's radar, too, and I know Attorney Gibbons will keep reminding us about it until it's done.
When we, when the town adopts that, they would be adopting it for all boards, and it would include not just special permits, but variances.
Right, yeah, anything that follows under the, the master and the law, chapter 39, section 23D, you'd have to look at that, but, yeah, it's more than the planning board, it includes the ZBA, and perhaps a select board, too. Okay, number seven, and this goes to what we were doing tonight.
Yep.
Clarify several of the classes of use in section 5.2, table of use regulations, and I called out 1.5, especially that could be reworded. 1.7 might not be too bad, but you can look and see if there's other things that need to be changed. I think, I think the table's quite good for the most part, but we know that 1.5 can be, can be changed a little bit and still capture stuff like 14 Washington and other things that might come up.
We're, I, so I appreciate the, um, reason for this, but I also take a look, so air's still, we're 70, 50 to 70 years into, um, zoning. There's an awful lot of stuff that was just done the way it was done. So I would caution us to try and make it perfect for 14 Washington, and then, you know, go six store, six, go up the street around the corner, and on the right is a building that's a multi-use dwelling that actually overspills its borders.
Yeah.
So we're going to, we're going to see these problems no matter what.
Right.
Okay, so, no, I really like that, and I like organization, but I think one of the, we'll spend less time dealing with them individually than we will.
The ultimate reality is that, I mean, I'm, I'm, I think this should be reviewed, and it should be on a consideration, but as Jeff said, we're always going to find exceptions and complications.
Oh, yeah.
Especially this town that has all this old, weird, pre-zoning construction and build-out, and then in a modern, contemporary world, there's going to be conflict.
And not only this, I mean, you have, you know, things like the transfer station, the property next to the transfer station where Burnham Trucking is, that's zoned residential.
A1.
Huh?
A1.
A1, yeah.
And has no services.
Right.
There's zero town services on that property.
You know, and, and before this, uh, you know, the Maxon Properties were, you know, that's number eight. That's just to change the zoning map, so it reflects the changes.
It reflects the changes that already been implemented.
They've already been made, so.
Well, I think these are all excellent.
I like number nine.
Yeah, number nine.
Nine, 10, 11.
All right, right.
Anything else, Mark?
Um, I was just going to bring up the, the idea, I'm, I'm, you know, when I have time, I go through, you know, my paper files, I'm trying to organize them by year. So there are several things that I want to walk a member or two, this, this doesn't have to be the whole board, but, you know, some of the planning board. I should show you where the, the official subdivision and site plan files are in, in the building department office. So show you the official files that go back decades. And then, you know, for each case, I keep my own file of, you know, hand notes that probably go into more detail about things, so if there's a question of, why did, on, especially Stratton Hill, why did the planning board decide this? You might see something that I scribbled on a piece of paper about why.
Okay.
And that sort of thing, so I can walk somebody through the paper files that I've been keeping. As well as show you, I think my computer files are quite well organized, you know, like under site plan, I have a separate, you know, file for each site plan, and for the more complex cases, you know, there might be traffic study, you know, engineering consultants, you know, little sub folders for each of those files.
Okay.
Depending on the complexity of the file. So I was thinking next Thursday would be a good, it would be a deadline for me to get things, you know, in shape to show somebody.
A week from this Thursday.
A week from this Thursday, yes.
And the only thing, as I said in email, I think we need to have someone from Town Hall, too.
Yes.
I don't know if it's the clerk's responsibility, or whether it's somebody's, but, so it should be a one or two board members plus someone from Town Hall. You know, someone who would be guiding the new planners, saying, "Here's your office."
Right, yeah, here's, you know, because when I started, there would, I, because there was no planner for a while, there was nothing. So I had to creep all this stuff from nothing, so.
Great.
But it would be good to walk somebody through it, so that, you know, you're not, uh, you know.
Fair enough.
So you know where things are.
Yeah, there's one thing I was going to ask for, and this is, um, hopefully not out of bounds, but, um, you have a set of resources you work with here in town. You decide to go out for RFP, there are companies you communicate with, so you have a rolodex that would be.
Right.
Kind of germane to the, to the, to the job itself. I would wonder if that's something that would be willing to share at least at some level.
Oh, yeah, yes.
Because, I mean, I, I find myself now getting phone calls from people I know about, "Oh, that guy we worked with seven years ago, oh, yeah, here's his contact information." You just, you don't think about it at the time, but there's a lot of players involved in a bunch of what we do. I could not name a traffic consultant right now, but I know I've read half a dozen traffic reports.
Right.
You know, and stuff like that, so consultants like that, that you typically use?
The consultants, yes. Yep, that's, that's good.
Anything else, Mark?
Uh, no, that's what I have for this evening, and I'm, I'll probably have more for the next meeting as well.
Perfect.
But.
Appreciate that.
Yep.
Has everyone had a chance to review the meeting minutes from March 28th? Are we ready to, to approve those minutes? May I have a motion?
Move to approve the meeting minutes from March 28th, 2023.
Second.
Any discussion?
Still a couple of, couple of typos there, I don't know if anybody, I just looked at them quickly, but.
And I also think that your question, Chair, on, uh, further permits, special permits, is kind of moot from what we had, the discussion we had today, that the applicant feels there are no more special permits, and we've closed it out, so I think that, that closes out that ambiguous paragraph.
Oh, okay, all right.
Want to change anything by longhand, just then go on it?
Sure. If you'll share that with the town planner, we'll get into the official copy that I'll sign.
The first page, it just comes, when we start, continued public hearing site plan for Nassauia, it says present, present, there were no presentive, I don't know what that word is, instead of representative, it says presitive.
Where are you exactly?
Right there in the middle of the first page.
Oh, I had changed this, uh, it's not reflected here, I don't know why.
I did see the rep, I, okay.
I changed that.
There were a copy I read from you actually has that changed.
All right, let's make the.
All right. Oh, I see.
There, it should say, "There were no applicant representatives present," period.
Right, exactly.
And you don't even have to say "for the meeting" because it's redundant.
Yeah.
They weren't here for lunch.
There were no, there were no applicant representatives present, yeah.
I agree with that. I, you know, the re, I thought it had changed, okay.
The next one you're going to find is.
I thought Heather had sent me the one that you had looked at, maybe it wasn't, and maybe it was slightly earlier.
On page two?
Yes, sir.
Third paragraph, second to last word is four, it should be seven.
Third paragraph on the second page?
Second page. Starts with Mr. Cal Goldsmith, well, the parking changes.
Mm-hmm.
And that.
Shows the seven parking spaces.
It should be seven, not.
Oh, seven.
Mine does say seven.
Mine says seven.
That, that's okay, I'm just, I'm going through the typos that you found earlier.
Oh, oh.
Okay, good, so, yep, that says seven.
Well, the paragraph before that does, does issues. So in the middle of the paragraph before that, it says, "Mr. Gallagher mentioned at the last meeting, there were a few comments regarding addition," I should, I guess, I guess you would say, "the addition" on the left side of the building, and the wing on the right side, I don't know what a wing is, but I think it's, guess where it is. So there are a few, there are a few changes to those comments. I don't know what that means.
That's interesting.
I'm, yeah, I'm confused. This should have, yeah, this doesn't reflect my spelling correction either.
So it should say something along the lines of.
Gallagher should have an H.
He mentioned that he's made a few changes regarding additions. The comments he's talking about, I think, were comments from the planning board, but it doesn't say who they came from. Mentioned at the last meeting, there were a few comments regarding addition on, I don't know.
Should we defer Chair to a clean copy?
So I'm going to remove, I'm going to, I'm going to, yeah, I'm going to rescind my motion.
Okay.
The motion I made was on the copy of the draft minutes that I received today.
Yeah, let's do this.
Corrections in it.
The next meeting.
Mr. Diskin, the correction you're trying to make is actually in the one that came out to us.
Let's make sure we have everything in the correct, because it seems like in the multiple versions. Let's make sure we have everything in the correct, because it seems like in the multiple versions.
Yeah.
I think someone you may have sent out, Chair, earlier today.
Got lost. Okay, so things got lost. Okay.
I guess we all agree that the majority of what's represented here does represent the minutes of the meeting.
Yes.
Right.
We're just talking about a couple of clarifications. Maybe we can still vote on it, and you can just make the clarifications as you sign it. We all agree that the content is, is pretty much correct. It's just.
Well, it can't hurt to, since this is the most recent meeting besides tonight, and the reason we, we requested this one to skip ahead in the, in the, in the line was because, you know, I'll be writing up the notice of decision for all this stuff, and it's helpful to have all the waivers and all the discussion listed, so that I can refer back to it, you know, it's an active case.
But the, the words you're digging through on that paragraph, Mr. Diskin, it's actually in the minutes that were disseminated this afternoon by email.
All right.
It actually, that paragraph makes sense.
Oh, can I ask, and, well, I'll let you finish this topic.
I'm, I'm done.
Should we talk about just improving this process? Like, why isn't this just a shared document with comments of our edits? We can even look at that shared document here, so there's not multiple saves, there's not multiple prints, and then we could be like, oh, look, Jonathan thought we should change it to this, and then we'd be like, okay, cool, and then click, and.
I think that'd actually be more complicated.
Okay, so even if it's not that, and the edits just showed the changes, like if we track changes and it's approved, like if there's not multiple saves of the document, we wouldn't have a document here that's not, like if it was just one document, we would just be done.
It would be. It's just that it was an awkward, this doesn't usually happen. What usually happens is I go through it once and it's good enough. It just happened that while I was making revisions, someone else said, submitted a document with their revisions, and then the confusion became in the merger of those two.
But there should only be one document, always.
I, as I said, right, so.
And, and, and to, to your point, the document did come out, they just have track changes turned on.
Which may be the correct one, because I saw seven reflected in that one.
So let's, you know what, let's just defer this to the next meeting, we'll get it clarified. In terms of old business, new business, I just wanna let everyone know that the master plan survey instrument has been distributed to all the chairs and all the town departments, and we'll be gathering feedback. And I think we're responsible for ours too, that we, we should, um, I'm thinking how we should handle our own comments, Julie. Do we just wanted to go through it, the two of us, and then present it to the rest of the board members and saying, this is what we're thinking in terms of our?
Typically say that's the town planner's job, but I understand we're in a different situation.
If you wanted to just go, when you, you know, the, you received from Farley the survey, link to the survey instrument for the master plan?
Right.
You just wanna, you know, you just check, make the appropriate check-offs, what you think, and just run it by us?
Yeah, I did start filling, I started filling that out for the town planner.
Yeah, that's it. Good, perfect.
But I, I should, you, you may, you know, I'll, yeah, I could send it to everybody once it's done, but you may, you know, where I, where I said in process, you may disagree, and, you know.
Yeah, it's unlikely. I mean, but I think, but, you know, yeah, we just wanna take a look because that's it.
Yeah, and where it talks about a smart growth district, the forty R, I think functionally, the form-based code districts function like a forty R, so I mean, it depends on how strictly you want to adhere to the.
Okay.
The goal, which, you know.
Okay, great.
Sounds good.
All right.
That's the only, um, new, that's the only business I have. What do you have?
Um, a letter came out through Mark's office today stating that the Commonwealth of Massachusetts agrees that we are in compliance with the first round of the MBTA zoning requirements, and that there may or may not be a letter later from the Commonwealth. It's kind of a moving, it's, the goalposts are moving a little bit right now, so we may find we have some work to do at the, at the end, but we've made it through the, we, we've made it through the first okay period. We're good till the end of the year.
Yeah, my, my understanding is there may be a requirement to submit more proof, which is the work that the Regional Planning Commission did in their models that we spent so much time on.
And so some of you may or may not know this, they wrote a model, applied the model, realized the model couldn't be applied the same way everywhere, so they modified the model, and then they modified how they applied the model. No, it's, 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 it's a learning experience, and I'm not, I'm not throwing them under the bus in any way, shape, or form. They're trying to do the same thing for every one of our towns, and then they get out to Ashby. It doesn't fit.
Oh, yeah.
So they gotta figure out how to make it fit. And so depending on what's happening, Fitchburg's way ahead of the rest of the area on what they've been doing around transit-based zoning. We happen to be right there because of form-based code. We got lucky, guys. That's really what it comes down to.
Well, it's actually thinking ahead.
Well, but we didn't know MBTA was there. So when, when MBTA was overlaid, we're in good shape.
But the same logic was applied in both cases. We were thinking about what is close to a regional transit.
Exactly.
How do we get more density?
And I guess when I say we got lucky, I said, we are thinking ahead and, and our thinking lines up with theirs. So the letter comes with a slight caveat in it, which basically says, as they become more mature in their thinking, we may end up having to do something here. And Mark's already mentioned, and Karen Chapman from MRPC is, knows that they're on the hook for DLTA grants to help communities like this, and not this meeting, but the last MRPC meeting Karen was at, I was at, I actually mentioned to her, please put it on your list, because Fitchburg and A are, are low-hanging fruit. If it's a small grant to get us over the, over the goal line, we wanna know, we're gonna, we wanna know, we need to apply for it. She said, absolutely. So. No, it's, it's all good news. It's just, Commonwealth says, well, you did really good, except at the last minute, why don't I tell you have to do something? Is really what they're saying.
Gotcha. Mark, why did you include the, the two other documents you didn't talk about?
Oh, just, just as reference materials, stuff, yeah, right. Oh, yeah, and because in order to, I, you know, I've been updating, or printing, I should say, up the, the latest versions of the zoning bylaw and the subdivision regs, and I had that out earlier. I thought you should have the OSRD regs too.
Thank you.
Um, can I ask a question? Has Stratton Hill come back to us yet?
Not yet, and I emailed Bob Collins today saying we have an engineering consultant on board. Please let me know when the plans are ready so that, you know, we can get them to the, the consultant.
Okay. Um, and just a couple of what's going ons. The Shaker Mill Pond, the condominiums came on the market, the first set of condos and the duplex buildings came on the market over the weekend, and a quick drive down Groton Shirley Road, um, the plumbing's going in over there. So the tanks are mounted and the plumbing's being done. And the fences was, the fencing was being laid out, so that project's moving forward also. What's going on over at Panther Place?
Well, he's got two building permits, 'cause he's got a second frame going up in, you know, within the subdivision, down the street. Looks like all the units on Washington Street are sold and occupied.
I think those are sold and occupied, yeah.
Six, the six units he built there.
And DeCarolus, I think, is done. Have you built everything on DeCaro, on, uh?
I think so. I mean, he, he's still got some.
They're still constructing, but all the, I think all the permits were pulled and all the foundations are in over there.
Yeah, that's my understanding.
One thing that we should be thinking about is the four units on Central that were, that was Alex.
Oh, yes.
Oh, yeah, Brad Rieck is.
I forget his last name. Yeah, you know where it is.
Yep.
And.
Flores.
Flores.
Oh, Flores, yes.
When we did, when the six units were done before, this planning board had to make a site visit and sign off on the completion of the site plan before they were able to get occupancy permits from Charlie, so that's have to come up again.
Yep.
That we need to do a site walk, that that complies with the site plan we approved and sign off on the site plan.
And today's the first seventy-degree day. I expect Grateful Dog to be back in front of us soon.
Yeah.
Oh, right.
They've already announced that they're gonna put the trailer back out there.
Nice.
The hot dog trailer.
Have to come back again?
It's an annual permitting process. I think that's one of those things that, they have to go through Board of Health and stuff, but I have a feeling we've, I think, I think we've tackled that one before.
Yeah.
And it's just, and it, that may be something that a town planner can do in the future, if we have a returning business like that.
Oh, right.
And not have them come, not make Liz sit through three meetings.
Yeah, that was ridiculous.
Well, we didn't, it never happened before, but it's part of our, it's part of our bylaw.
Yeah, that's another thing, food, food trucks and mobile food establishments.
So, um, I would, I would ask if you have a moment to reach out to.
Someone, yep.
Yeah, just reach out to her. I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, but that's.
That's good, thank you.
The response was very positive to her saying, I'm gonna be back, so that's, yeah.
Any other old business, new business?
The meeting that I was attending to try to, you know, make changes potentially at the fall town meeting to portions of the bylaw that would make housing, you know, well, plentiful, let's say, and increased, that has now run onto a small conflict of too many people having other meetings to go to, so the next meeting may not be until May second, I think, something like that. So a whole month has gone by with nothing, which is not great, but.
Well, they pick planning board meeting nights.
Yeah, they did, yeah. Well, we, yeah.
Yeah.
You, you saw the same thing I saw.
Right, yep.
So that was good.
I appreciate that update.
You got a large group of people really involved in a lot of different things.
Yeah. I would like to mention one more thing from the, when you said Judy Barrett's name, it, it clicked that I was still checking some of the stuff that she mentioned on the things not to do with zoning.
Oh, right, yeah.
And it is fascinating that a single-family house, and that's why I could open it here and find it in a second, but there is no restriction on the smallness of a single-family house.
In the zoning bylaw?
Yeah, in zoning in Massachusetts.
In zoning in Massachusetts, yes.
But there are restrictions on the size of, of apartments or con, uh, multifamily units, other types of dwelling units.
Yes.
The only one that you cannot regulate is the size of a single-family home. Cannot regulate, cannot regulate it. It's the law.
Not, yeah, not, not as a zoning bylaw. And.
The building code.
Building code couldn't do.
Single-family homes are regulated in a building code and Board of Health.
Right, but you can't do it on the zoning.
So you couldn't have a ten-square-foot single-family home.
Pretty small single-family homes.
The, the number of square feet required for a second occupant in a room is not very much, and those come from sanitation laws and probably health laws, yeah.
So we regulate the size of lots and land, but we don't necessarily regulate, except in OSIDs, we have the freedom.
Yes.
Changing, but.
Then there's the question of maximum size of a house, and that, you know, big mansions.
What's the square, the square footage formula?
Forty-three, five, sixty?
No, there's a, there's a formula that many communities use for maximum size of a building on a property, and you, it's a mathematical equation done with how much square area there is and how much square area of the building, so you don't have the fifteen-foot setback, you know, out to the fifteen-foot setback on both sides. It's a floor area ratio is what they call it. We don't have that.
We have this section.
Not for that type of thing.
Yeah.
In the dimension section, we have this, this is the paragraph, minimum floor area dwelling units, that's what it's called.
Yeah.
All dwelling units, except single-family houses, shall provide a minimum habitable, habitable floor area as follows, and we call it seven hundred and fifty square feet for a dwelling unit on one floor. And if you have two floors, it's five hundred on the first and so forth, and.
Yeah.
Yep.
But it's interesting that, you know, there might be a possibility for smaller homes, but we'd have to concurrently get smaller lots.
Okay.
So.
I see that as a hybrid of OSRD.
It's a hybrid of some sort.
Yeah, but you have, you have a four-acre lot, you can do this, similar to what an OSRD can do on a fifteen-acre lot.
All right.
And air is well-positioned for that, with the sewer and the water. You don't have.
It's true.
Yeah.
All right, um, I've just had an unfortunately exhaustive, exhausting day, and unless there's urgent business, I'd be eager to wrap this up. Is there?
So moved.
So moved?
Seconded.
Everyone, happy Easter, happy Pesok, have a, we'll see you in two weeks. Thank you for all your work.
Thank you.